Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Uh, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand for that, please, and then we'll follow it up with the invocation by Dr. Rick Janelle, Lead Teaching Minister at the Bellevue Church of Christ at two-three-one-one Madison Street. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our God and Father, we thank you for all the ways that you've blessed us. We thank you for our great country. Thank you for the community that we live in. Thank you for all who serve the citizens of this area, including our first responders, our medical staff, and, uh, Father, we pray that you would, uh, help the decisions that are made tonight to be made with, uh, the thoughts of our citizens in mind, what's best for our communities. We pray that wisdom and good judgment would, uh, would be well seen. We thank you, Father, for those who do serve. Thank you for the, uh, the times that, uh, it's difficult to do the right thing, and yet, Father, we pray for strength and for courage. We pray for our country. We pray for the difficult times that we're in. We pray for the leaders of the world, that peace might reign. And, Father, in all things, we pray that your will would be done, especially in our own lives. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Janelle. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second. Motion by Cook, second by Stinson.
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move item fifteen A to right before eleven A. Fifteen A right before eleven A.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch to amend the agenda to move item fifteen A to right before eleven A. Any comments or questions? Please vote on the amendment.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Motion by Cook, second by Stinson to approve the agenda as amended now. Are there any comments or questions? Please vote.
I did this once.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Stinson?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stinson, second by Burns. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations, we have none. Item eight, organizational matters, there are none. Number nine, approved citizen communication, we have, we've not received any. Item ten, we have no liquor licenses this evening. So that takes us to fifteen A per amended agenda. Resolution number two-zero-two-one-dash-five-three, request to approve the Jefferson Place redevelopment plan for lots one through six and part of lots seven through eleven A lying south and west of Harville Drive, block one-seventy Bellevue, together with adjac- adjacent vacated streets, avenues, and alleys. Applicant is Mercury Property Management, Inc., general location, Sixteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street. And... Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns? Yeah, Councilman Cook, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-fifty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch.
May I?
Yes, Bree.
Tammy, can you just confirm that the redevelopment plan pursuant to resolution twenty-twenty-one-dash-fifty-three is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan?
Yes, currently that property is shown as medium-density residential in the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. Um, per section five-point-one-three-point-oh-one of our zoning ordinance, R G twenty-eight is defined as a medium-density development. That is the change of zoning that the applicant is requesting. So yes, it is in conformance.
Okay, we have a motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Stinson?
Just want to say, uh, I was contacted by Jeff from Mercury, kinda to be a liaison between, uh, Mercury and the neighborhood. Uh, he's agreed to a few things to, uh, try to make this a little better development between the neighborhood and Mercury as far as putting in trees along the south side and also getting the Humane Society to go in there and remove any animals that they find and relocate them. There's also a couple other agreements that he had with a private, uh, homeowner in reference to a sidewalk and stuff. Uh, I just wanted to say, I think Jeff has put forth good effort to try to make this a doable situation with the neighborhood and, uh, Mercury Development. And with him doing that, I was against it at one time, but with him coming forward like that, I will be voting in favor of this tonight.
Okay, any comments or questions? Other? Councilman Burns?
Yeah, I have a few comments and I'd just like to speak to the neighbors that may be watching this at home. I know you're frustrated and I'm frustrated too. Um... What I can tell you is, is that I've been going through neighborhoods and I can tell you that people are paying attention, um, and people do hear you. Um, and I, speaking to my colleagues, I think that the path of least resistance is to convince ourselves that nothing is wrong with this. Um, I know a lot of citizens that I've spoken to are not confident in that. I'm not either. Um, I'm gonna vote on the, no on this, and I'm also gonna vote no on the rezoning.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions? Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I wanna, uh, thank Councilman Stinson for all of his work. I really am glad that a lot of the negotiations took place, that he contacted many of the people. I think others of us all spoke to some of those neighbors, and I think the negotiating that you did and trying to get some things resolved in their interest is certainly helpful, so thank you for that. And I do appreciate the, the work by Mercury Development, too, in being willing to make some concessions. Uh, I, too, was not in support of this before, but had there been no concessions, I definitely wouldn't have voted for it. But by will it, being willing to work with it, I, and the neighbors, and, and make some concessions, that was very helpful to me. I also think that, uh... Lost my train of thought. Don't know what it was. All right, thank you.
You got the next item, if you remember, you can... Well, I do it all the time. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Tammy?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, so, um, what's on the agenda tonight for City Council is approval of a specific redevelopment plan that includes a site plan and a specific site plan in a later, um, item on the agenda. So if there was some agreements made with the neighbors, unless those are reflected in a site plan that we have and that you guys are voting on, that would be something between the developer and the neighbors. Um, city staff, the planning department, public works department, whomever is going to make sure the developer adheres to the site plan you guys have this evening unless it's amended in some way.
Any other comments or questions? All right, you have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
We have four voting yes, two voting no, with Councilman Preister and Councilman Burns voting no.
Okay, item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Item eleven A, ordinance number four-zero-six-eight, and ordinance to request to rezone lots one through ten and outlot A, Jefferson Place addition, being a replat of lots one through six and parts of lot seven through eleven A, lying south and west of Harville Drive, block one-seventy Bellevue, together with the adjacent vacated streets, avenues, and alleys from R D sixty O T O to R G twenty-eight P S with site plan approval for the purpose of multifamily residential development. Applicant, Mercury Property Management, Inc., general location, Sixteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-six-eight, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six-nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Sixteenth Avenue and Jefferson Street. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number four-zero-six-eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Bree?
Tammy, I'll ask you the same question. Um, is ordinance forty-six-eight and the rezoning in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan?
Yes, it is. Um, per section five-point-one-three-point-oh-one, um, R G twenty-eight is defined as medium-density development, which is shown in our future land use map as such for this property.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Okay, please vote.
I have four yes votes and two no votes, with Councilman Preister and Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you. Item eleven A-one, request to small subdivision platelots one through ten and outlot A, Jefferson Place addition. And I'll take a motion for that. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve item eleven A-one.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll take a vote.
And I have four yes votes and two no votes, with Councilman Preister and Councilmo- Councilman Burns voting no.
Thank you. Item eleven B, ordinance number four-zero-six-nine, an ordinance amending and adding a section to Article Seven, Chapter Twelve Bellevue Municipal Code regarding outdoor fireplace permitting requirements. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-six-nine, an ordinance to amend Article Seven, Chapter Twelve of the Bellevue Municipal Code by amending Section Twelve-dash-one-seven-two and adding new Section Twelve-dash-one-seventy-six regarding outdoor fireplace permitting requirements and to provide an effective date.
And Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we table ordinance four-zero-six-nine and we move it to February first, twenty-twenty-two, which would be our next meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to table item eleven B, ordinance number four-zero-six-nine to the February first, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven C, ordinance number four-zero-seven-zero, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately twenty-four-point-eight-five acres of property to Redwood U S A L L C. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-zero, an ordinance to approve the sale and conveyance of approximately twenty-four-point-eight-five acres of city property to Redwood U S A L L C and Ohio Limited Liability Company.
Okay, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number four-zero-seven-zero.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four-zero-six-seven, an ordinance to amend the municipal code regarding disturbing the peace. Uh, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-six-seven, an ordinance to amend Section twenty-nine of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to disturbing the peace to repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, and I will open, uh, twelve A up for public hearing. And if there's anybody here to speak, please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, and you'll have five minutes.
Hi, Brian Hanson, two-seven-zero-four Georgia Avenue. And I'm in favor of this ordinance, but I'm not in favor of, uh, truncating the required readings and stuff unless there's a real reason for that to occur. And since this is also firsthand for me to speak, uh, publicly, I have a separate but related issue to it. Uh, the last council meeting, y'all passed, on the twenty-first December, passed ordinance four-zero-six-six which established our new boundaries, our six wards. And that went into effect on the fifth of January, as the ordinance stated fifteen days afterwards. So I'm confused tonight with Mr. McCaw. Nothing personal against him, but I'm confused tonight. Uh, we, as of the s- the fifth of January, we have six wards and one of them's open. So I would contend, and again, nothing personal with Mr. McCaw, I would contend his seating on the council tonight and his votes are not in accordance with the ordinance and should be therefore set aside. And steps should be taken to fill that sixth ward seat because, uh, I guess nine-two was repealed entirely. There was no provision to carry over the at-large council position, the way I read the, the minutes, et cetera. So that's all I have on that, but I would, I would advocate that four-zero-six-six is in effect as of the fifth of January, and you have an open council seat to fill. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not gonna try to answer that without conferring to our legal, but is there anyone else? And we'll go through the public hearing. Is there anyone else, uh, wanting to speak regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Anyone else regarding twelve A? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing, and I would ask, uh, Bree to respond.
I'm not gonna address the specific item because it's not on the agenda tonight, um, so it wasn't open for public comments, but I am comfortable with proceeding with Mr. McCaw voting, um, until the next election.
Okay. Any other comments?
Um, Bree, are we gonna address waiving the third reading? Because that was another question he asked.
Pursuant to statute, you don't have to have like a for cause to waive a third reading. Um, it's within the city council's right to waive the third reading, um, on any item other than like boundaries of wards and annexations. There's a couple limitations. Uh, but you don't have to have like a reason to waive. Um, staff is asking that you waive it in this case, um, because there are some things in the disturbing the peace ordinance that's currently on the books um, that we don't really wanna keep enforcing for various reasons. Um, so we wanna get it in place so that it can be effective sooner than later. Our officers can train on it, um, and move forward with, um, a more solid disturbing the peace ordinance.
You good with that, Chief? Councilman Cook?
Do we make a motion first to approve, then amend, or the, uh?
Suspend.
Suspend.
You'll have to have a, a motion to suspend the rules and waive the third reading and vote tonight. And so you would vote on that, and then if that's approved, then you would vote on the ordinance tonight.
I'll make that motion, but I'd like to make a comment first to, um, Mr. Hanson. Normally, we don't like doing this, but I think in this particular case, I'm a former police officer. The gentleman sitting to my right is a police officer. I could tell you my life before this, disturbing, disorderly conduct was a very popular charge that was probably made, arrests made every day where I, where I did my law enforcement. I think it's critical to get this on the book so it can properly used by the officers on the street. So we're changing the law because we think it's, there might be some issues to maybe defend it if we would go, well, I should say, we're making changes that we think are appropriate for the officers to make in arrest for this charge, and it's a tool they can use every day, so let's get it on the books as quick as possible. So I'm gonna support this, and I'm gonna make a motion that we suspend the rules, waive the third reading, have public hearing tonight, which we did have, are having, and vote on it tonight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to, uh, suspend the rules and waive the third reading and vote tonight on twelve A. Any comments or questions on that? All right, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now, uh, motion passed to suspend the rules, so we will, uh, take a motion to approve ordinance number four-zero-six-seven. We did?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance forty-six-seven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve B, ordinance number four-zero-seven-one, an ordinance to amend agenda section two-dash-twenty-nine of city code to allow for amending of the agenda as allowed by Nebraska law outlined in Nebraska Revised Statute eight-four-dash-one-four-one-one. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-one, an ordinance to amend Section two-dash-twenty-nine of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to agenda, submission of materials, formulation, public availability, et cetera, to repeal all previous versions of the same and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you, and I will open a public hearing, um, for ordinance number twelve, or ord- item number twelve B, ordinance number four-zero-seven-one. Is there anyone here to speak regarding this ordinance? Please come forward. Anyone here to speak on twelve B? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, and the third reading will be February first, two thousand twenty-two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number four-zero-seven-two, request to rezone lot three, L G B Properties Replat One from R E to R S one-twenty for the purpose of existing residential development. Applicant, A M Z Investments, L L C, general location, one-three-five-one-zero South Thirty-Sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-two, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six-nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about thirteen-five-ten South Thirty-Sixth Street. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be February one, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four-zero-seven-three, request to rezone lots one and two here and there addition, being a replat of tax lot six B and that part of tax lot six A two being the north fifty feet of the west, one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet of the east, two-hundred-and-sixty feet of tax lot six A, together with the south fifteen feet of the east, one-hundred-and-ten feet of lot one and the south twenty-two feet of the east eighty-five feet of the east two-hundred-and-sixty feet of tax lot six A, together with the south fifteen feet of the east sixty-five feet of lot thirty-four. So the boat is addition to the city of Bellevue all located in the southwest quarter of Section Thirty-Six, township fourteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from R G eight M and B G M to B G M for the purpose of residential and commercial development. Applicant, First City Development, L L C, general location, two-three-zero-four Lincoln Road. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-three, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six-nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about twenty-three-oh-four Lincoln Road, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be February first, two thousand twenty-two at six P M here in the council chambers. Item thir- thirteen C, ordinance number four-zero-seven-four, request to rezone tax lot six A six located in the northwest quarter of Section Twenty-Six Township fourteen north and range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, from B G to R G twenty for the purpose of an adolescent care facility. Applicant, I three, L L C, general location, one-oh-five Fort Kirk Road South. Um, Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-four, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number thirty-six-nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one-oh-five Fort Kirk Road South, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be February one, two thousand twenty-two at six P M here at the council chambers. Item thirteen D, ordinance number four-zero-seven-five, repealing Section two-zero-dash-two of city code regarding sale of cigarettes, tobacco, et cetera, products to minors. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-zero-seven-five, an ordinance to repeal Section twenty-dash-two of Article One, Chapter Twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code regarding furnishing cigarettes, tobacco, et cetera, to minors and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Second reading and public hearing will be February one, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. Uh, we have no public hearings on matters other than ordinances this evening. Item fifteen B, resolution number two-zero-two-two-dash-zero-one, resolution to amend the master fee schedule regarding certain planning Item fifteen B, resolution number two zero two two dash zero one, resolution to amend the master fee schedule regarding certain planning department fees and cemetery fees and authorize the mayor to sign. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero two two dash zero one.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, fifteen C, resolution number two zero two two dash zero two, an emergency resolution regarding implementation of a pandemic sick leave policy. Uh, do I have a motion there? Councilman Burns?
Thank you, I have moved that we approve resolution number twenty twenty two dash zero two.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote. Oh, okay.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen, current business. Sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the deed of reconveyance and sub- substitution of trustee for two thousand eight Calhoun Street in an amount not to exceed five thousand sixty nine dollars and two cents. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion we approve item sixteen C.
I'll second that.
By Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen D, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the community development block grant subrecipient agreement with the housing foundation for Sarpy County in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen D.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Welch, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the closure and removal agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for the city of Bellevue, Schilling Drive, Ninth Street to Thirteenth Street bridge removal project in an amount not to exceed fifty five thousand dollars. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Burns, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen F, approve and authorize mayor to sign the agreement with Felberg, Holton, Yulevig for the Galvin Road and Birchcrest intersection improvements project in an amount not to exceed fifty eight thousand one hundred dollars. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, sixteen G, approve and authorize the mayor to sign amendment number two with Jacob and Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. For the storm drainage project in an amount not to exceed fifty one thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars. Have a motion, Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen G.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by Preister, any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen H, recommendation to approve and authorize mayor to sign amendment number one to agreement for engineering services for American Heroes Park and Hayworth Park wa- wastewater system in an amount not to exceed ninety one thousand seven hundred dollars. Motion, please? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen H.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, any comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
I was just wondering if Mr. Albert could fill us in on this project and and where this is headed.
Um, so Bellevue University has been working on this for a few months about potentially putting their soccer field and softball uh, filled out at, uh, Hayworth Park. When we started looking at that, we learned that it doesn't have sewer capacity, uh, currently to handle what they want to do. Um, about the same timeframe, uh, in talking to Doug at Public Works, uh, we wanted to do some improvements on the other side of the, uh, the highway at American Heroes, which also requires some improvements. It all runs the same lift station, uh, collectively and working with him and Parks Department, it made sense to do this all at the same time as opposed to coming back and trying to do it later. Um, and then that works into Bellevue University's plan as well so that they can move forward with their operation. Um, Mary Hawkins from the university is here tonight, if you have questions for her, she has her letter of intent um, and a draft of what she, uh, envisions down there. Uh, we will have an M O U forthcoming, uh, what that partnership would look like in the future, uh, between them and the city. Uh, but it really doesn't get off the ground unless we have the proper infrastructure to support, uh, the locker rooms and the fields down there. So, uh, that's the point in in doing this now, um, along with the American Heroes side.
Okay, uh, just, I don't know if anybody else would want to speak. I would just like to make a comment, and you don't have to, I just want to make a comment, if you want to. We can open it up if you want, someone, but I'd like to make a comment about the letter that we received from Mary Hawkins. Um, I, living in this community basically since the age of three, um, I, I'm sure glad, I know you've, I like to see all your sports to be able to play down in our city, I guess that's the best way to put it. I know there's been movement around between, there's another field down there that was a soccer field when my nephew went to Bellevue University. They played down at Hayworth Park, I know they've played at Bellevue Soccer Club, I think they've gone into Omaha or maybe Papillion La Vista, baseball. I sure hope that someday somehow somewhere we can get all your sports, uh, teams, you know, just playing locally where I think it would maybe attract even some of the local people to come and watch. So I, what we got from you, Mrs. Hawkins, looks outstanding, I think it looks like a great project. I'd love to see it, uh, go all the way. Um, I talked a little bit with Mr. Risto and I'm, I sort of asked him that maybe we can go a little bit bigger on our sewer system because there might be a neighbor across the dyke that might be able to use it or even future development down there. So that's something that can be addressed, maybe, of course, we're proving a dollar amount tonight, but something that we may have to also think, but I'm, I'm glad you're doing it and thank you very much.
And not unless we open it up for public.
I'll, I'll open it up for, I'll make a motion to open up to public input.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second by Welch to open up item sixteen H for public hearing. Any comments or questions? Please vote. Thank you, the public hearing is now open on sixteen H, so if you'd please come forward, state your name and address and.
Mary Hawkins, um, four one four Greenbrier Court. But I brought the coaches because I think your point is really well taken. We have driven these teams all over the city and really appreciate the opportunity to be at Bellevue. The coaches can really tell you the, what this will mean to the athletes, it's huge. We're hoping to do a lot with it and not having locker rooms really makes it rough. No locker rooms, no restrooms, press box, but I would like to introduce Michaela and Mark because they just do a fa- fabulous job for the city with, uh, um, the teams that they bring in. And this will have an opportunity, I've talked to Fred Yuhi for, uh, more tourism and more activity and some, which we all like to hear, revenue generation for both the city and Bellevue for these fields.
Well, hello, everyone, thank you so much for having us tonight and, uh, Mary Hawkins is right. I can't tell you, I do a lot of recruiting, not only locally, but California, Texas, New Mexico, you name it. And what's really fun right now is, um, for the first time, gosh, I think I'm starting my fourteenth season here that I'll be able to host our own softball camp in our own city of Bellevue at our own field and it's really exciting. And the buzz that it's creating when I have, um, my two other assistant coaches, I have a hitting coach and pitching coach. And when they're out there saying, hey, we keep, we hear you getting a field, we hear you getting a field, I'm like, I think we're really close, but until I see the, the shovel in the, in the ground, but I'm really, really excited and thank you so much for the opportunity. It's not only going to help, um, our student athletes, but it's definitely going to, um, create even more buzz with the youth in our community, so thank you.
We're very excited, but I need you to state your name and address for the record.
I'm really sorry, I'm, I'm Michaela Semino, thanks.
Address. Yep.
Okay, twenty nine fourteen Bar Harbor Drive, building Nebraska.
Thank you.
Hello, thanks for the time, my name is Mark Keith Preston, um, I'm the main soccer coach. A lot of the stuff Michaela says, um, obviously I completely agree with, but, um, being able to not drive twenty minutes to Papillion or thirty minutes to Omaha to host the games would be fantastic to have it here in town. Um, having lived, lived on Hancock Street in Old Town Bellevue for a number of years um, and coaching youth soccer in Bellevue for the last twelve years, I think not only this will benefit our, our athletes, but also the local youth community that don't necessarily have to drive twenty minutes out to, to the middle of Omaha to go and train in the summer or the winter or wherever those places would be, so I think, of course, it will help us, but I think for the community it would be fantastic getting some more traffic down there and having the, the youth soccer players, uh, in Bellevue, being able to practice and train in Bellevue. Thank you.
Yep, and your address, please?
Four six zero five Brook Circle, Papillion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we're very excited to have you and, uh, look forward to, to seeing more action here in Bellevue from Bellevue University. You guys have been great for Bellevue and I'll try to help you out. Councilwoman Welch?
Um, I am in support of this, but I just have a quick question because of, and Mark, maybe you or Doug can answer this. Um, this, we found out about this and we found out we needed to add a bigger or put, there was no sewers or is that what the issue was? Is that what I understand?
Uh, currently down there, there is, um, a tank, uh, for the, the restrooms that are down there that is, uh, emptied every so often. Uh, that doesn't have anywhere near the capacity.
Okay.
Um, for us to do what they want to do, um, and it simply just makes sense to do it.
Understandably, my question is, because I was on the budget task force, is, was this a, a budgeted item that we anticipated something like this coming? Or we just moving different funds to, and I'm okay with that, just, I'm curious.
To a degree, um, we've always known we were going to build a wastewater system on the American Heroes side. We did not know, uh, or understand the great development we're going to get on the south side of Mission. So this is a chance to combine them both and save money and resources as we put them together.
Okay, perfect.
And this is what this does.
Thank you.
Council, Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, maybe Doug or, or Mark, I'm, we know this is low, it's next to the river and it does flood in the area, not as much up here, but could you, for the, the public, identify how we're protecting the investment?
The construction of this system will be sealed and will be a low pressure system and help, um, keep some of the infiltration out. And all of the parts that can be built above the hundred year flood plain will be. And as, um, my favorite employee Epiphany likes to say, it'll be wash and wear. So whatever we can, whatever we can install to make it repairable after a flood goes through, all the electronics and moving parts will be either sealed or above the flood plain.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yeah.
You did just say your favorite employee in public, so I wanted to warn you of that. Public hearing still open, is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding sixteen H? Please come forward if there is. Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Um, I do have a motion from Cook, second by Welch to approve sixteen H. Uh, any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, item sixteen I, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement with Longo Drive LLC for the sale of two two zero six Longo Drive and authorized payment to Ambassador Title Services, three one one Village Point Plaza, suite one oh two, Omaha, six eight one one eight for the library renovation project in an amount not to exceed three million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman Stenson?
Make a motion, we approve sixteen I.
Second.
Motion by Stenson, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions from Council, Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, I'd like to open this up for public input.
Second.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson to open up sixteen I for public hearing, so please vote. Is there any questions on that first? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, the public hearing is open on sixteen I, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding sixteen I, please come forward.
Mayor, city council members, uh, I am Julie Dinville and I am the director of the Bellevue Public Library. And I would just, uh, like to read a letter, uh, that was crafted by our foundation, our library advisory board, our friends of the Bellevue Public Library and myself, um, in support of this measure. As you know, since, uh, twenty nineteen when we did our last feasibility study, we have been working towards another, uh, direction to try to, uh, create in a renovated or improved library. And, um, we think this is a good opportunity for us. So our letter says, "To the Bellevue City Council, as representatives of the Bellevue Public Library administrative staff, Bellevue Public Library Advisory Board, Bellevue Library Foundation and Friends of the Bellevue Public Library, we support the proposed purchase of the Bellevue Professional Center for the purpose of realizing a new library space. The project to renovate and or add on to the Bellevue Professional Center building will provide an updated infrastructure that the current library built in nineteen seventy five has lacked and will also provide for the opportunity to include services much desired in a new facility. These include, but are not limited to, quiet study rooms, a maker space, additional meeting spaces, defined children's and young adult areas and a drive-through service point. In addition, there would be opportunities to create a fresh, engaging, flexible and inviting space for our Bellevue community where newer and better technological services can be provided while also maintaining our core services such as programming, collections and informational services. There is much still to be determined through a design process, including the timing on renovation and relocation, but we believe that a worthwhile step forward for the library services in this community can be achieved through this action and the renovation addition project that would follow. We look forward to working with the city council, the mayor and city administration and our public works department um, to move forward with this project. And this letter, um, that we presented to you tonight is signed by our board president, Deb Stortbet, Kathleen Crawford Rose, who's our vice president of the board and also the treasurer of the Friends of the Bellevue Public, Friends of the Bellevue Public Library, Claire Severn, our Friends of the Bellevue Public Library president, Guadalupe Mir, Bellevue Library Foundation treasurer and myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, for that letter, thank you for all the work you've done over the years, I know, uh, you've had a lot of hopes, uh, and you've had a lot of hopes broken, but I, I think this is a great opportunity for, for Bellevue and, and your library and your staff, so. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak regarding the library?
I would just make a quick comment. Uh, I went on a tour with, uh, council member Stenson and councilwoman Welch, Mayor, Mr. Risto. Mayor, Mr. Risto, Doug Clark. Representatives for the buyer, or I'm sorry, our representative as a buyer, representative for the seller. Probably missing someone's name, Kathy had a friend, no. But I think this facility is gonna work great for what we're trying to do here. I truly wanted to keep our library, I know we're right on the boundary, but west of Fort Crook, west of seventy-five. I think that's the our population that probably needs it more. Going through that building, I was amazed at the, uh what I thought was very good shape. That it was in with tenants in it and the tenants will have options to stay or. Not to stay when their leases come up, that'll just have to be talked about at that time, but right now there's available space. For us to get this at lea- uh moving, so it's not, we're not waiting. For a contract, there's space right now there that we can start moving forward on this and I just hope we do. A great facility that the city uh is very proud of, thank you.
Still have the public hearing open, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak regarding the library? Please come forward. Seeing nobody, I'm gonna close the public hearing and uh Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor, do we have any idea what the cost will be for refurbishing? We probably have some rough idea because right now we don't really know exactly what we're doing or how we're being directed, but. Any cost estimates on that?
Yep, so let me maybe back you up a little bit on historical, when we shifted away from building a new facility. We looked at remodeling our current library and that went to almost five-point-three million from a four-million-dollar original bid. So because of construction and supply chain issues, contractor shortages, along with that, and Mary Hawkins is here too, we were looking at a partnership to. Um take a year and use uh part of her space and we would have had to renovate that space as well as pay for the move. Twice in and out, and that took it in excess of the five-point-three, so it opened up, what do we do here? Uh Doug actually went looking for a building to see if there is a more equitable place that we wouldn't would incur cost. And the purchase of this building came up, so we've we've worked pretty steadily with uh Leoi Daily on the renovation. And what we're looking at is probably short of a million, there are some things that we've gotta redo. Um but to give you a little histor- historical perspective here. Right now we're probably gonna see about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand in revenue that'll come from our tenants. Um a couple of those are long-term leases, some are short, but at minimum. Um out of a little bit short of twenty thousand square feet out of fifty-seven thousand, the balance is leased out. So our net revenue will be about four-fifty and then our expense to manage it is about two-hundred, so we'll positively cash flow. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, based on that, we'll use that to satisfy our bond if we pull a bond on this, which I think that'll be our next step. And then allocate shy of a million dollars, um Doug, we should have our bids and our discussions as to what this is gonna look like. Um so probably maybe um um up to a million more. Uh the Library Foundation has raised ninety thousand, I believe, as part of their uh commitment to this. We also have a grant in front of the state for about one-point-two million. One-point-one-two-five, so which can go to the renovation of the building, so there's some other funds besides our funds that we'd like to utilize. Uh to even lower ours, um we, in addition to that, um if we move forward on this building. Our intent is to sell our current library and we have some negotiations going on with that. Which will also reduce our uh our expense for the remodel, so we'll apply that that purchase price towards our remodel. Just can't, we're not prepared to disclose who's negotiating with us, but I think it'd be a great entity in the public to. Take that building and repurpose it uh for another public use, so. Short, long way around to answer your question, but um our million, we think we'll be able to mitigate differently, so.
Okay, and that million could be offset by the million-point-one grant application. Cause my next question was gonna be any collaboration, any partnerships on it, but. In this case, it could be the state and the grant that could be a partner. But are are there any other groups that we're talking to, Bellevue University or anybody else, Metro?
No, there were partnerships in the original feasibility study that were referenced that we would develop, that fifty percent of our funds were gonna come from partnerships. Um along with a half-cent sales tax that was going to be looked at to pass to help fund it. Um at that time, they thought that half-cent sales tax would go to ten percent of this building and then fifty percent of it would come from private public partnerships. Um we've taken two other outside agencies that do these type of public-private partnerships. Right now there is no indication that they will participate, hence we went after the state grant. So we don't see besides our ninety thousand Julie that we've raised through the foundation, that's it. So there aren't, there aren't partnerships that are sitting on the table.
Okay, but all combined, it would be within what we had budgeted and there could be some of that even offset.
Yes, and if you take the positive cash flow of the building with our tenants. Uh that technically reduces what our purchase price, I mean it'll it'll offset that, I think we're gonna look to probably escalate that to a seven-year buyback. Using our cash flow from the from the tenants. And then if we take phase two for another addition to it, it gets a little more complex for us of whether we add additional square feet. Or if one of our tenants who was on a month-to-month, who indicated they wanted to stay another two years. We'd have another tenant we'd like to put into their place and then use their their leased area for our expansion, so we don't have to renovate. That gets a little sticky for us, so we're not, we're not there yet, but what what we will do is, upon purchase, we'll start moving towards renovating the existing. So we currently have a twenty-two thousand square foot library, uh within that library you have mechanical rooms, some meeting rooms. The main floor that we have in this site is seventeen-three and then there's twenty-five hundred upstairs. We could use the twenty-five hundred upstairs for storage or meeting rooms and then take our first floor for all public use. I think Doug, I think our public use was fifteen-five in our existing library, so. In that seventeen-three, we'd we'd be able to accommodate immediately for our public use and then go to phase two after that.
Okay, the the last question that I I think of now, on the site map that we had in our packet, I just noticed it. Earlier before the meeting, it looks like a little section of the parking lot on the south end. Is not within it and that the property line comes right up against the door on the south side. I I don't know if that's the accurate plan, but it just looked a little tight in that area and I. Don't know if.
So our parking, um when we looked at the building, I think according to. Our our planning department, we'd have to have, I think, three-point-five parking spaces per occupant. Or uh per square footage, we're at four-point-four, so parking, we've got more than adequate, even if we renovate on top of that. But I'll double check on that proper, I think our property line goes, cause you have s- SAC or Cobalt that is on the far south side. And then there's a roadway between the two of us, our property should be the one that's on the north side of that entryway. So I don't think their their property's not gonna butt right up to our front door.
Right, it, the property line on on that diagram uh looks like it does run. Between the Cobalt and that property, but then as it goes farther back, it does a little jog in there, that's, it just looked odd. I noticed it earlier. Not an issue, thank you.
Councilwoman Welch.
Well, and I wanna just verify that the previous, we did a feasibility or a. A feasibility study, if that's the correct word, for the library when we knew we wanted to do something. And the previous administration wanted to wanted to make sure, where they figured out how to fund it was to do a half a cent sales tax. And this project that we're doing, and I wanna verify this is correct, this is with no burden to the taxpayers, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's a win.
You know, one of the other things, I think it was mentioned here that was important to us too, is the other library was gonna be cited. On the west western side, so it'd be thirty-sixth Street in that area. Uh we felt, and I think Julie would support this, that the larger need is on the east side of seventy-five. So we wanted to make sure that we still continue to serve that market, if we do this wisely and we do it with very little impact to the taxpayers. Second phase would be to add an annex in the western side and that would be our four-to-five-year plan is to put an annex in western. Western Bellevue, not a full-blown library, but something's a little bit smaller, but making it more more accessible to our west western side.
Well, and I think that one of the things that we can do is just um as this progresses, just put a lot of publicity out there and signage as to where the library is. Cause you make mention of this location and people are like, where? And so, but we can handle that with signage, but I, you know, when I saw the project, I thought this is a win-win. Because of the tenants being there to help pay off the bond, the location was good, the space felt good, I I just. Kudos to you Doug Clark for finding it.
Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor, just, I'm glad that uh uh City Administrator Risto did mention west of the. Uh Fort Crook Road because certainly there are low-income folks there and this would move it a little bit closer to them. So it's still pretty centrally located and and I like the whole concept of recycling an old building. I mean, we don't do that often, this is an excellent example of that and a very successful project in. Refurbishing buildings that were largely empty and sitting for sale, this one for years. So that one isn't sitting empty and I'm glad the VA is using part of it, I've been there for that. I haven't seen the rest of the building other than the schematics, but I like the concept of reusing an existing building. And I think you can get it cheaper and you can do a better job with it, so kudos to Doug for looking and finding one.
Councilman Burns.
I. I hear you guys, um here's my biggest concern and I will, I will tell you that. For the record, I do support a library and I support a brand-new library and on a modern library. I served on the executive board, that one originally looked at hiring Clark Anderson to come in and do a feasibility study and my concern is, is that. We just wasted taxpayer dollars to do a feasibility study that looked at eighteen different sites, picked the top four. And this location didn't even make it in. My understanding is we're using that same feasibility study to get grant funding. So we're not gonna listen to it, but we're gonna utilize it to get grant funding, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the the concept there. The other thing that that's really concerning is, is that I think back in twenty nineteen when Clark Anderson came and did their presentation. Um you know, the 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 idea that a brand-new library was gonna cost forty million dollars, which also. During the show, um that I did not get a script due at our last council meeting, um was also thrown out three times. And the the concerning part about that is, is that information only came from one person and that was Councilman Pat Shannon. I've also called Pat Shannon to ask him where he got that number because it, that sets sets bells off in my head. Um and he said he characterized that as an exaggeration. I also contacted Clark Anderson to get like a real estimate and they said between fifteen and twenty now. If we would have moved into phase two at that point, um that cost could have come down based on um conceptual design. I think that this is also a bad location and again, I support and I wanna see something happen Julie, I support you a hundred percent. And you work so hard and you've been advocating for this, so by any means, but it's an isolated area. Think about the walkability, it's surrounded by a bank, um I can't remember the the other building that's adjacent. Down the street you have do-it-your, the DIY garage, you have a motel and then behind it you have apartment complexes. So when we talk about a broader vision and and how does, how, I I just think that it's worth investing in our community. The other thing about a sales tax is. The only thing that I remember mentioned about any kind of um that would have involved sales taxes, the throwback tax credit, which I think already exists. That the legislature created when they built the CHI Center in Omaha. Um which is essentially something a city applies for and I think at that time they could have gotten seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars shed off the top of it. Um I do know, um Bellevue University was approached at the time, um there were no commitments. Um but there was interest and that was if we were looking at the Herman Drive. Which is also a good location and yes, that was privately owned property, um. My concern is, is is w- we just decided not to move forward because of a phantom number. That's really concerning too, um would we have been further along in this if we would have acted then? Um and then the other thing is, is why would, why would we waste taxpayer dollars? Why would we have community engagement and a feasibility study? And they had community engagement, now the other understanding was is that if there needed to be a bond issue. And that's essentially what we do with capital improvement projects, we should be doing that. And that was only if, or if we had to get something passed, we already had community buy-in. So I think we've just kinda completely disregarded all of that and that's where I stand at on this and that's why I'm voting no. Um but I just think that we're missing the boat. I think a library is a source of civic pride, I think it's more than my cellphone, it's my, it's, it's the Bellevue Public Library. Um and I think it's utilized for people at different stages in their life. And y- you're talking all ages, so. I I don't know, I'm not asking anybody to vote anyway, I'm just explaining why I'm voting no. Um I think in the long run, this is a bad deal and we're about to to sh- to spend three-point-four million dollars. And I understand that there are some benefits to. A used building, I hear ya, but I think we're missing the boat.
So in the uh administration's defense, um and your statement regarding this council wasting. Councilman Burns' statement that we're wasting taxpayer dollars, what I heard, we're not wasting a single da- pack taxpayer dollar and we're getting a brand-new library.
I I'm talking about a feasibility study. Uh why would we go through that, why would we pay for that, why would we hire a firm for that? Why would we get community input, that's what I mean.
Well, I can tell you this administration does not, does not do studies and make plans and put them on a shelf, so. We're actually doing things and I think we're doing it for the better of Bellevue, so I I will leave it at that, but I just don't want you to s- sit here and say that we're wasting taxpayer dollars. When this administration works daily to save our taxpayers' money and we've shown it with good fiscal responsibility. And I can't take uh insult to that, so thank you, thank you for your comments.
Um I'll just respond quickly, look, I'm not trying to insult anybody. Um and I can't help it if you feel a defensiveness, I I appreciate your concern and your comments. But I will say, why would we waste people's time through community engagement and spend money on a feasibility study? And then we pick a location that's not even included in the feasibility study. That's my point and now it's twenty-twenty-two and are we just doing things to do things? If we mess this up, we mess up for a generation.
Councilman Cook.
Thank you, Mayor, I I just wanna make a couple of comments, you know, Councilmember Price referred to this building. There's a building right behind us that we repurposed and look at this, we, you know. I came on, right, the buildings that we're in were purchased, but I came on the council when we did all the renovations, had those completed. And I I think a library study, probably I did, did identify sites. But I don't know if it would have identified the site that was already developed. So i- if, I don't know how that we would have led them to this site to say, is this a place to put. A library when it was already developed, I mean, so I I don't know how that would be in the top four. But but we did talk about a half-cent sales tax to build a library, we were talking. I I I don't remember exactly how it went, but I know that there was a figure of forty million, but it was in twenty million. Well, we're not even close to twenty million, we're not close to fifteen million, we got tenants that if it all go, which we're taking a chance. But if it all goes well, the comment was made that we could use that rent money. Along with an an additional two-hundred thousand for the care and upkeep of that. And possibly pay this down in seven years off a rent toll from the tenants that we have there today. We don't know what's gonna happen when leases come due, if people will wanna stay or to go, but that's a chance we're taking, so. There has been discussions of millions, let's just say millions of dollars for a library. Possibility of a five-cent sales tax. There was discussion about to get our fire department to f- full strength of a restaurant tax. And we have not done that, that has not occurred and we have a fire department, there was an article in the paper, our local paper about. That has not occurred, and we have a fire department, there was an article in the paper, our local paper, about, we were fully staffed. We're, 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 we're increasing the numbers to the police department. There's no raise. We have not raised anybody's taxes. So let's talk about the good. The good is, we had an opportunity. This opportunity wasn't available when they did a feasibility study. We had an opportunity just by Doug going out and sticking his nose around town, I guess. I, I, I don't know how he found it. Um, but the potential to increase the size of our library in this building is unbelievable. Um, the square footage in that building is unbelievable. And I just think, is that the best of the best? If I could, if I could have twenty, thirty, forty million and, and then pick a site, okay, let's do it. But then we gotta pay for it, everybody in this room, if you live in Bellevue. This is a chance to repurpose a building, part of a building, and get a library up and running for less than what it would, was gonna cost to add a little extension and renovation of our current library. I, I don't, I, I'm supporting it, so I think it's the right thing to do. And with it being empty, or the part that we wanna start in being vacant, Doug can get bids, we can come back with a contract, and we can move forward on it.
There was no forty million dollar figure. That only came from one person and two people as of our last meeting.
Where did that, uh, uh, there was a World Heritage article that was just written last couple of weeks, wasn't there? Or Bellevue Leader, that the forty million dollar number was mentioned in?
So that number's been floating out there, um, and if you look at it, so it's, if, there was a discussion of building a two-story, fifty-five thousand square foot library on the western flanks, um, at probably four to five hundred dollars a square foot right now. But back in that time, probably been about three hundred commercial development. To either purchase the land or use city land, build the building, and then put the fixtures in and bring it all up to modern technology with all the things that were thrown in there. That's the neighborhood of thirty to forty million. That was what was floated out there.
No, was it? That's not true.
Well, we could sit here and argue this from here to Sunday, but even if you wanna say it was a twenty million, we don't have the twenty million to do that either. It was, to say that we're gonna get it from a private or a public donation, um, as evidenced by the Library Foundation. They've done a great job, but ninety thousand is a far cry. You don't have the other investors coming through, and a sales tax is just, it's not something we were committed to do.
Okay, so then my next question would be, is what are we doing to go for those par- pa- public-private partnerships? If I'm not mistaken, Julie Denville and Joe Mangiome did approach Bellevue University. They also approached Randy Schmazel, who's president of Bellevue Metropolitan Community College. Now, again, no commitments. Now, I also know, because we're talking about renovating the current library, back then, the discussion was, that was already taken off the table because it could, it only expand so much and only go up so high. We already knew that information, but we wasted time delving into it. And so I, I just, I guess my concern is, is what are we doing?
Saving money and making a library. I mean, we've, we've discussed it all here, so, um. By that logic, I mean, we'd be a broke city, so I, I commend all you guys for working hard on a, uh, on an excellent plan. And I think the library's very excited and happy to get to it. So is there any other comments or questions?
Councilwoman Welch.
Yeah, and just regarding the feasibility study, my understanding with those studies is to see, what do the people feel that we need? What needs to happen in the library, and they pick out possibly the best locations. But that's to figure out what the people need, because we could've went and just built a building or renovated the current one and said, we don't care about your input. It was to discover what does the citizens of Bellevue, what are they saying that they need in a library? So that we are on target with making sure that that gets provided. So that study was put out there for good information for us to come back. Doesn't mean that we take everything that is said, because I think the thought, Mr. Risto, was if we did everything in the feasibility study, that's where the multimillion-dollar building came from with doing everything that the feasibility study said.
That's not true. It's not true, and I'm gonna tell you why, because it only looked at sites. We did not get into phase two for conceptual design. It was going to be around fifteen to twenty. But that was only an estimation. It does not say that in the feasibility study. The other thing is, is as we would've moved into that, we could've shed off costs if we thought things were unnecessary. And then if we would've explored public-private partnerships, would we be getting more bang for our buck? Would we not have to settle on renovating a building? That is tucked away, I have the hardest time trying to explain where the Bellevue Professional Center is. Again, I support a library, but I support a brand-new one because I think that's what the city of Bellevue deserves. Enough of the just-doing-things or the hole-in-the-wall projects. And I think that this is one of those. Are we just doing something to do something, or are we doing something so we have civic pride?
Excuse me, I think we're getting into campaigning, uh, tidbits here, so I think, you know, we've, uh, we've moved beyond the discussion, so. If you don't have any further input. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we have a motion by Stinson, seconded by McCaw, to approve sixteen I. Uh, please vote.
We have five yes votes, one no vote, with Mr. Burns voting no.
Item sixteen J, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the inner local agreement for the expansion of the unite, unified s- uh, Sarpy sewer waste and amendment to the agency's jurisdiction with Bellevue's extraterritorial jurisdiction. Motion. Councilwoman Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen J.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Any comments or questions?
Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, uh, maybe to ask the question, wh- why are we adding this? And I, I would think it's south of Fairview, or is it, wh- what's, what area? I couldn't really tell on the map.
South of Plattview and, uh, pretty much anything east of fifty-fourth, yes.
Okay, so it's.
Mostly the Highway thirty-four corridor where.
Catching all of that additional area that someday we may annex in, so this way we're covered.
Yep, instead of building our own Pioneer Line in there, separate than the wastewater system.
Right, that's what I thought, but I couldn't really see where it was extending. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Motion by Welch, seconded by McCaw. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Uh, comments must be limited items on the current reports, and I think these reports, uh, since it's a second meeting, will be moved to the first meeting of next month, so unless there's any discussion on past reports. Okay, we'll put those, uh, in the record when we get them. No closed session this evening. Takes us to adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Price. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.